Appointments to public office and we're waiting for our town board to come up and... So these three, Kimmy, have their paperwork already if you want to start with.
Yes. The elevation I can't even do this still in the line, okay? You swallowed soft meat to say this way and I heard that you will make a new contract discharge. All of these are coming on you as a... Okay. Have you got a pen? Chuck, have you got one there?
Oh, there it is.
There's more, Kimmy.
I don't know what they mean.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I recognize my presenting?
No, go ahead. That's what I said.
Okay. Uh, so I'd like to read off the members who are here this evening from the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. Uh, who've joined us this evening. We've got Nelson Hopekler, who is also on the Solar Committee. Uh, we have Glenn Milheim, someone you may know is better deaf. Uh, we have Kim Donahue, who also serves on the Budget Committee. And in between, providing line for the committee, she's taking notes for us as well. We have Mark Goddard, who retired and likes to take care of things for us in his free time. And then we have Stacy Diamond, who has graciously accepted the role as Chair of the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. And then we have Chuck Margosian, who is an alternate, but he loves contracts. And so he is going to lay his job on the, uh, review of our upcoming solid waste contract. And two members who aren't here are Dustin Hewitt and Todd Walton. Todd is an alternate and Dustin is a full committee member.
I must say that when we put out the notices on both the Solar Committee, we can look for people who love solar and recycling. We've had the best response for any committees that we've put out in a long time. So we thank you all for stepping up to the plate because it's a lot of work and we appreciate your support in helping our town move forward.
We're just excited about trash apparently.
So Kim, is that really back on the budget committee? You don't mention that.
No, I just misspoke. I planned on the budget committee, not the whole one.
Is it opening, I hear?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I don't think it's over.
Work on our station, you can make it.
Yeah.
The owners are already doing automatic trash. If you can't provide a park, for that, please put it on and take it over.
For the recycling?
No, for the park.
In Kingston?
Yeah.
Didn't I know that?
We don't, uh, I don't know if they're... It's gonna be a solid over instead of...
They don't supply a special bin for it just for recycling?
Good try, good try.
That's not bad, that is.
You did well, you did well.
Are you all ready?
Hey, uh, Kimmy, you have some that are...
They're gonna say, yeah, they're gonna say what they're...
Okay.
Ready? You swallowed soft meat to say this way and I heard that you will make a new contract discharge in the form of using modern land use as a waste in recycling. According to the district's abilities and we both see the rules are very good, the class solution was saving it. And making that design for us. Can't say to me, "Sorry, please." Uh, no, as long as it's free. If anyone wants a copy, if you want to send me a mail, I'll send it back to you or...
Anybody have any questions for any of us?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to public comment number one. Seeing none? Liaison reports. Yes. Do you want to start?
I do. Uh, a couple of things. We're down to the dog park, just the richest comments from before the other day, nothing else to do. And I did walk around it and I didn't see any kind of busted bags or anything, you know, around the perimeter of the fence there. Looked actually fairly clean to me. There are extra buildings there, as we mentioned, a shed and one of those cardboard things. And then, oh, I guess there's a little dog cage and there's a cupboard there. So, but other than that, I didn't see any indication of any problems in the woods. Now, they could have very well heard that and taken it out by the way.
That's okay too?
Huh?
That's okay too?
Yeah, that's all right. That's what they're supposed to do anyway, so. Um, so that was at the, uh...
Chuck, can I ask you a question? Were you on the board when they, when that deed got approved?
I think so, I don't...
Do you remember any of the history of it? Because I mean, I don't know, I haven't heard anything from anyone. I know some people have contentions in town, but I have gone there a couple times, I have seen it. And I just wondered if you knew what the original agreement was.
I mean, just a dog park that's been maintained, you know, by them.
And they had their own jobs?
I wonder where we're gonna end up.
Okay.
I've been at that school for a long time, haven't come up with that.
I think Marilyn Kuhn was the one that was the citizen that kind of organized, uh, the park. She was the one that had gone over the select board looking for permission to have a dog park in town. I'm pretty sure it was, I could be wrong, but I...
It was basically a dog park, you know, who had the, got permission to use from original land, the fence up. And as it's developed, they get smaller dog area, big dog area.
Do we do any kind of auditing on their funding or anything? Like what they bring in and what it goes out for?
Was there any, did they have money coming in?
Yeah, they charge the dogs.
Well, they do.
It's a membership type of thing.
Twenty dollars for a community resident, twenty five for non-resident.
Right.
I think regardless, we need to have a memorandum of understanding or something, like we've established with softball league and expected rules. Probably shouldn't be buildings there without a building permit and...
I'm curious what the original agreement was and if we could even find.
We'll see what we can find. It's on my...
Yeah, just to point out, we'd like to know what we expected it on originally before we, you know...
How long has it been going on? It's been a while, I mean...
I bet it's been...
For twenty years?
I was gonna say fifteen, twenty.
There's information in the file, I'm quite sure.
Yes, I'll review it and have some answers next Monday.
Firehouse, just as a, not, they, the, uh, it's on time, relatively speaking, been a week or two. It's under budget at the moment. They're looking at, last week in April, first week in May, so to move over, to start to move in, providing the office furniture and stuff comes in, it's, you know, six weeks out like everything. And they're looking to, once they make the move over, to keep the building open so that the police and fire, before they can run and tear it down, the police and fire want to use it for some practice, the police department, you know, going room to room and their particular thing and the fire people. So the plan kind of at the moment is to leave it up as long as they can, but I think June 1st is the date to take that down. And they were talking about a, uh, ceremony, you know, and they were thinking of maybe during Kingston days, rather than, you know, sure, I mean, Kingston days is right there, everybody would be there, they would open and be able to tour. So that's what the conversation was, that hasn't been set stone as to when they have it. So that's, that's it, but it, uh, if we did do a tour, it's moving along, it's amazing, I was there. Nothing is, is, uh, backordered, everything that's supposed to be there is there.
That's great.
So it's just a matter of time.
I love the chroming in the front of it, that was really sharp.
And the garage doors have made a big difference.
Really did, the dark doors are the brick, uh, but it's beautiful building, absolutely beautiful.
So, planning board, for us not there, I wasn't prepared for a great training right now, we paid a little bit of talk. But anyway, um, as we, as we know, this is the new chairman, new vice chairman. Lynn is the new chairman and Chris Bayshaw is the new vice chairman. There, uh, one of the issues that came up, which we've talked about a little bit, is the, um, the bounds problem in that they have referred that back to the selectmen to do some enforcement.
They've all been set at this point.
Pardon me?
They've all been set now.
Well, they've been found and set so we can go on with the permit for the other place or whatever.
Is it the correct mark? It was not a pipe on a rod or lining into risks?
They went back and reset everything and brought the, I was gonna talk about that later. But they set the right things, they set the actual ones that they needed because they left out some of the turn points and some different things. And like I said, I'll probably talk about it at the end of the night a little bit.
And the, um, pond issue, which again, we talked about, in the fact that they've turned that back to whomever for enforcement on the pond and writing the complaint to the state.
That was the one that was in our folder over here.
That's the one for parts?
Yes.
They call it the pond. Okay, I could change subjects on.
Small pots, right?
Yeah. Well, it's a recommendation that the planning board, that we go for a cease and desist because he basically had a flood out with all the water down there and it washed out of his protective system. And then he said that he needs to get a, uh, plan together on how he's gonna deal with this.
Well, in line with that, uh, we see at the Conservation Committee meeting, thankfully, Mr. Hart was covered before we had the fire station building committee meeting. They're at the same time, um, that was also brought up as a complaint. The, the white cedars that were supposed to be protected were flooded out massively by this lack of adherence to the plan. Just to pile on that.
So we have to cease and desist so we can... Then there's the, uh, and the form, form should be sent in too, I would guess, right? Hmm? That form is in the back of your, if we're done sending it, you say?
Well, what we do is we'll do a cease and desist and serve it to him. And, uh...
Basically, this is because in the past, the planning board has decided things in their meeting or not decided things in their meeting and then passed on the records to the select board without the full board's approval. So this is so we have a tracking mechanism to make sure that the full board is requesting the select board's enforcement.
And the, uh, the fellow who came in, I don't know, just has information, the Lone Tree Camp is being bought, being trying to be bought.
He was in today.
Well, did you see him at Town Hall? It's trying to be, trying to be bought by a father-son type of thing, uh, through the banking support. They want to continue on on the rest of camp as it has been and slowly rebuild it up, but...
But that's...
It's a for-profit, obviously, but, and they want to do some work doing all that, but the main thing, he's now was trying to get a deal with the banks and so he can...
He came in today for occupancy, you know, the sheet to get it signed off. And we haven't got a copy of the deed yet, so I told him to check back.
And the problem isn't bad, I mean, we talked about it a little bit, is at some point to do a walkthrough over there. Whether it needs to be officially done, he comes into the planning board if he has to come in, but even as, as the department has a...
There's a lot of questionable buildings out there that may attempt to be turned to something they're not even removing.
I think you...
I think you... The walkthroughs, you get fire issues, you check building issues, you check health issues.
Right, so whatever group it is with the selectmen or, you know, your inspectors and that kind of a thing. But at some point, if, when he gets to own it, when he's owning it, just so that it'll help you get that idea too. You know, whereas when we're trying to do something and all of a sudden, we can't, we need to do a lot more.
And then we need the paperwork from the planning board saying what was approved and what was said at the meeting because I've already read two different stories. So we need that paperwork that hopefully will come in a timely manner.
It should be in the minutes, in the minutes.
Well, they do a sheet now every time they make a decision, they send it downstairs with any, you know, any conditions they have made or what's been approved.
He was just kind of in, uh, explaining, he wasn't necessarily on the, on the list. Um, and then the other issue a little bit, and you've talked about it a little bit, is the, um, communication with Chuck in reference to having the planning board have some idea of probably what we are... One, they were concerned about what his actual job description is, you know? And what he's doing for the town. They don't seem to particularly know or they haven't had with him or...
Well, that bothers me because I've talked to Glenn and Ellen both about the procedures and the timeframe and everything.
Okay, I'm, I'm, so I'm just, don't you have the message on that?
Yeah, we've been trying to work it close.
Right, and I think that...
We've ordered a new form basically based off of this, that we're gonna give every group to fill out and send in when they have a complaint. And we're gonna give them a procedure of how we're gonna do things.
And that, that's exactly what they're working for. I guess Glenn, Glenn, Glenn got a, well, Glenn got a particular letter. Chuck had written a letter to, uh, what exactly it was, uh, in reference to an issue. And this fellow thought he should come right to the planning board for this particular issue. And Glenn didn't have any idea.
Do you know what it was?
It was, uh...
It was a fifteen in Los Amo.
It was business, something about...
Operating business?
Yeah.
They've been told, they've known about that for months. They're fascinated, checked into that and they finally did.
Right.
Started the process and told him, we told him he needed to go to the planning board.
Right, well, Glenn got the letter and he said that, you know, he didn't realize what was going on. And he does have to come into a site plan and we don't, he didn't know whether the fellow had been told that by Chuck yet or... So he put it, you know, he was bringing it downstairs. So that's what kind of brought that particular thing up and then evolved a little bit more, a little more information, so. Okay, that's what I had. And that's what I had.
Okay, uh, additional complaint for Conservation Commission, uh, was over on Ray Pond. There was someone on sentence, or Ninth Street, who was commandeering a paper road so that they could, on someone else's property, so that they could put a dock in, something to know about this.
Yep, I've been there, talked to them, they've been in here and talked to us.
Okay.
They, they basically want a trespass.
That's what it sounded like.
And I told them that I couldn't tell them they could do that. They said, well, no one owns the land. I said, everybody owns the land, somebody owns the land. And so they're gonna try to find out the owner and work through that, but they've stopped the excavating.
Okay. Um, the other item that is on our agenda for later is the second check from the Acorn Town Forest Cut. I believe it was more than the first one, so I was able to review the, uh, the final report with the board footage and looks like it did pretty well out there. And, um...
Am I supposed to have a check or has it not been turned in yet?
Right. What was the, like...
I have another check.
As far as, you need to reach that, you need, did it go?
I didn't expect it to send it.
If we talked to...
I didn't think it was another check here.
Oh, I thought it was in that article.
And what were you back? I, I'm still assessing my role and responsibility on the Conservation Committee as the new member. Um, I think there's certainly room for improvement in the process, just for documentation, but my initial look without knowing exactly where and what they cut doesn't play. I have a broad, you know, kind of a generalized knowledge of where they cut in, in the area and prices are high right now, so it's all, but...
So this check is six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. So that's a, seems like the first one was five thousand something.
Yeah, I think it was about just under twelve grand.
I just don't know what role falls between roadage and selection and conservation so we can fix...
Yeah, in the past, I think the selectmen were a lot more involved in the selection and notification process for logging operations in the town forest.
Well, how? It was written by a warning article because I checked into this when I was on conservation as they are in charge of it. And they get to do what they want to with the money.
With conservation?
Yeah, goes in, goes into a forestry fund that they're the authorized spender of.
Well, they're not. Uh, that is another thing that came up in the discussion of the bylaws is, um, there's a financial responsibility section and basically this was pulled from the old bylaws that they, someone that happened upon from the early days of the Conservation Commission, but basically it says to spend any of that money that needs to be be of honor. So...
All right, Sandy showed me something that said something totally different, so we gotta figure that out.
And so I, I was not able to get over to the Town Hall today and speak to Sandy about it, but the way their bylaws are written and what they reviewed. So I'm, I'm looking into that and what the exact uses of the forestry fund and who's responsible for accepting those funds and managing the subcontractors and everything like that.
Well, I'm exactly where you were because I thought it was an awful lot of money that's going into that account that...
Yeah, I, I think there's, I'm still assessing.
Okay.
Figure it out.
Was, was this the, um, the place that Rich didn't know about?
I, I, the notification was a little haphazard. Some people who just, I heard that he didn't find out.
He didn't find out about it till a lot of guys and everyone there, my lawyer.
Yep.
He had no plan, no information and his main thing was he messed the rug with his wife and bringing the skid out of the mail. But fixing the rug, the rug back.
Yep.
So that, eh, somewhere around here, he just didn't get...
I, I don't know what, I don't know why that didn't hit to the board, but we'll address it then, correct the problem.
Obviously, we're not gonna do that one for our lifetime, but, um, is there any up and coming in the next couple of years or...
What I'm looking to do is for you, so there's a forestry management plan for each one of the town forests or, or most of the town forests. Um, and a bunch of them were recently done.
Plan was done two years ago, I think.
I think. No, there was like a rock grab and one of the other small ones was done just last year, so we gave me copies. So we're gonna get digital copies and go through all those and just kind of sit down with the Conservation Commission and see what the plan is moving forward as far as our time line for those things, so. Uh, there is a plan put in place, the forester goes out and draws all these things up and it just tells you exactly how to kind of manage them. And it's just a matter of picking times and scheduling and putting them on.
How much money is available in your, under their auspices?
A plus.
I think I, that's in the truck, but it's, uh, it's twenty-eight thousand.
I thought it was two or three times that, no.
It's, yeah. So that money would be used for forestry management things, whether it was...
So that would pay for a forester to come in and do an assessment and compare, you know?
Get rid of some dead growths and...
It can also be used to enhance access trails and, and markers.
Okay, just curious.
The Conservation Commission has a very good handle on what it can and can't be used for. I think the, it's more the process we want to refine, I think, from the selectmen's perspective. And again, it was my first meeting, so I wanted to let them do their thing.
You didn't want to, when they bust the doors?
Forget it, wait till the second one to fix everything. Uh, I, I think it's just a matter of opening up the lines of communication between us and them and also always making sure that our process is refined so that everybody's aware of the address and the issues that came up. And I can talk to Rich about that in a moment, he's back. So, um, so the other committee report I have is for the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. We met last Wednesday and we're definitely honing in on, on what our focus is. And I think primarily it's going to be basically reducing the tonnage of waste and recycling that town pays to get rid of. So just seeking out alternative methods of disposal. Um, the way we're doing that is through assessments of other towns who basically drawn up a sheet of, uh, information points that we're looking for, other towns, size, tonnage, but also if they're utilizing a transfer station and we're calling ours a collection point where garbage can be processed, bulky items, electronics, you know, larger recycling that people can't put out of curbside, anything you can process or something like that and either make money off of it or not pay to get rid of it are, I think, the things that are gonna, that the board will be focused on or the commission will be focused on doing is just basically reducing our cost via reducing our, our outputs. So, um, and everybody met, everybody who's on that committee tonight, so. Uh, on that note, we should be seeing something from our existing waste removal contractor this week, I was told. So we'll see where that ends up. Obviously, this board will see it first, but the, the commission, the committee would like to look at it as, as well just so they can have their due sense. Don't think there was anything major from the inspectors?
No, we kind of transferred some duties, but that didn't bring anything to the reality.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that was, it was just clarifying who handles packs and fire working appliances. So that was divvied up between our plumbing inspector and the fire department. And then, uh, just some discussions regarding software that we'd be using for processing permits and getting input on that. And then just start making around, take a look for plates.
Tony? People didn't know Chief Rich retired on Friday.
Yeah, that's, that is official.
And, and would you tell me if only this car was there on Saturday?
First Monday of retirement, I saw this car parked there.
And just a reminder that we're having a parade Saturday, starting at the high school, coming down Main Street to greet him at Town Hall and Drive By. So we have a crowd.
I, so I would just like to thank Chief Rich for all the service, but where did that sign come from up there?
They put that up on in front of...
Okay, if you, okay.
I think that's very nice.
Okay, I didn't think their business would buy it.
No, I didn't think their business did buy it.
Oh, they did?
As far as I know.
Really?
Very good. Follow me.
Elliot?
Don't have anything this week?
Uh, one thing I've got on stained glass, that they got back the original stained glass window that they have redone and it is mounted. Good news and bad news. Good news, it looks great. Bad news, this is not a big difference in the new and the old. Other than the strength and, uh, everything's new now, so it's had some feathers you can like bounce them back and forth and this one's solid. So we will be starting a fundraiser to gain funds for that, um, from the public. We're seeking a couple of grants that, you know, hopefully will come through.
How much are the windows costing?
Well, we're waiting for that. We have to put out the full bid. We've got some estimates from like twenty-four to forty thousand to do the rest of it. from like twenty-four to forty thousand to do the rest of the windows.
All of them, or?
Yeah, all of them, and we're hoping that it's closer to the twenty-four than forty, but we have five people that are sending it out to bid, it's a limited crowd that does that, and depending on the company is how long it will take them, and different things that will, we.
These are the windows in the library, correct?
Yeah, and what we're talking about just, it's still in the talking form, but giving somebody a certificate, a picture of the window and everything for their office if they make a large donation, and something to show, because unlike most things we do, there's nothing that you will see unless you go in the museum to see it, so it's not like people drive by and say, wow, nice window, and somebody did it, because you don't see them unless you're inside looking out, so. But that's.
Did you go on the tour in Portsmouth with the guy?
The what?
Did you go up to Portsmouth and see the guy working on the window?
I didn't, they did.
No, I know, I know they did.
No, I didn't go, but they said the operation was amazing, that he's got a guy next door that he subs out, like rebuilding the frames and stuff if they need it, and, I mean, this is the guy they typically would want to use, but they're gonna send it out and see how, I guess, out of the five, there's three that are really qualified to do it, and the other two would probably take a year and a half to do it. So we'll see what kind of, but those, that will probably be going out in the next month of the thing to get back. So we have unexpected funds to spend, your update for library, three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. I mean, American Rescue Plan Act.
Those are their suggestions for things they want to spend ARPA funds on.
That's how they want to spend it?
Yeah.
Did I ever get that sheet? So it's a laptop, five laptops of four hundred and ninety-nine dollars each. Twenty-four ninety-five, three D printer for a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and school outfitters forge cabinets.
Did we allocate a percentage to the library, did we talk about the library at all, are they on that list of, are for funds?
We have told them to make recommendations, which.
Did they get some money already?
I think the only two things that have gotten money on the phone system and the digitization of records, and I think we're taking, we'll see if we come up to those things cost before we spend anything else.
Okay, so we don't need to make the motion on this tonight?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, they just wanted to get their suggestions in, trying to give.
I would like to see their, our next meeting, if I'm like, I mean, get kind of an updated projection on what the digitization is gonna cost, and what the phone system is gonna cost, and start laying out our next priority.
Let's see, we should be able to have that by the department heads, because they should be through, they've picked up the first group of stuff, so scanning it and getting that in is gonna get us a little, we have to go through and look at it now and see if we like the order they put the property files in, you know, the whole thing, so that's two weeks, right?
The department meetings in two weeks.
I would hope we can make that, but if we don't, we should be able to place the next one.
Can we pretend that we have more?
Well, this first group takes the longest, because they have to go through and figure out their procedure, and, you know, look at files and see what kind of order makes sense, and then we can go back and tell them, we don't like the order we do. We've been going through plans and everything downstairs and eliminating dumpster holes, so we're not scanning them for nothing. We have some plans, and we have three and four copies of, like, planning, fire, building, health, so we're getting that down to one file, so, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a long procedure, but hopefully they'll have some answers for us. I think I said to last meeting, we did order a small computer to put in the window downstairs, that the public can come in and look up files in the future, and I'm guessing they're gonna come in sometime in the next couple of weeks and set up our systems, but they had to scan some stuff first to have something to set up.
We don't have that computer anymore, we looked around the corner from Citytop, we used to have them, they were way back in the day, we could look up files or something.
We had a couple laptops, we talked about using block dives, that throw them away, that they're like.
No, yeah.
So, to update them, what's gonna cost more than a new computer.
The only thing is, if it's a laptop, I hate to say it, is just be like bolted down, because, yeah.
I think we're under, under control on all that. So now we got new business.
I didn't have a case for you.
I didn't have any, but I've got them. Board business, we've already talked about the highway and the police department, next Monday night, we're supposed to have our highway department recommendations ready to go through. And we have the thing for the forest fund here that we ought to take a motion to accept.
Make a motion to approve the unanticipated funds for the second half of the Acorn Forest. Acorn Forest.
Second.
I'm just gonna say the amount one more time. The amount is six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. So I have a motion to second any other discussion. All's fair, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Tensions, motion carries. Accessing and permitting office, we're now open at eight o'clock in the morning.
Eighteen.
We're going to four o'clock in the afternoon, which is where we've been all along. I want to make a recommendation, and I know it's probably gonna end up in a battle, but I'm gonna make it anyway, that we close Friday, and I'll tell you why, because the majority of towns that I used to deal with, and a lot of towns in this area did the same thing, and it would give them a day of uninterrupted work down there, and we're only talking about losing four hours, and we can think about it or whatever.
How many people come in, in that four hours?
Not many on Friday.
Exactly, so they can.
On Friday, well.
If they're here.
Okay, that's fine, I knew that's the reaction I would get.
Well, I guess my pushback is, like, we've closed at noon for over four years, five years, and I watch people dislocating their shoulder, trying to rip the door open at twelve oh five, and it's quite literally in front of their face, and any change, and people still come to the town hall to try and vote.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna post the new hours on our website and the bulletin board, so that'll be up, and I've already had some people that are glad. And the reasons moving it from nine to eight?
Contractors.
Contractors.
Coming to get.
I mean, most of them start at seven, so they wanna come here first thing, get their permit, and go to the job, and, I mean, you can answer that, but two or three a week at least.
We had two, two, today after five o'clock, once, and people come to mine, and go to the other side.
So I mean, that's, most towns, I mean, a lot of towns open at seven, and do it.
Did you say, so you want to start doing permits on your side?
He's funny, aren't you?
Public comment number two. Correspondence. Point ones we've done, no, it's an intent cut. It's on Door Road. Well, my comment on this immediately is I want to go see what they're cutting, because last time we got Tor may own did an intent cut.
Oh.
No one looked at it, I want to see what they're, so we'll talk about this next Monday, if that's okay with everybody. Complaint of the rude signs, I have talked to the guy about this, and they may be coming down, I told him that it wasn't the town saying that, that it was just that we get a lot of comments on it. Kevin turned in his sheets, everybody caught up with their evaluation sheets and turned them back into Cindy.
For sign? Some need to sign those, I don't know how many do, do the sign.
I'll start. I need a.
So is this to go back to the signage complaint? Is that even a, only in our offices?
No, no, but I think I've kind of got the grace to deal with it, eliminate it, which I don't know if it's gonna work or not, but we'll see, but we probably get, I don't know, three or four weeks, I mean, we get a lot. So motion to approve minutes of April fourth and April seventh.
So moved, called public in on public, second.
Second, Chuck. All's fair, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Forest. Seventy-ninety, I forgot this, we had a meeting with them last Thursday, I think, and Phil had asked them for a couple of things. Part of the seminary deal is that the improvements have to be done by the state guidelines and Department of, his board, all of the.
Interior Department.
And what Phil asked was, who pays for that? And Ernie called a lot of people, that they will evaluate the proposal for free, but then they recommended having a couple of inspections throughout the process, depending on how elaborate the process is, or how staggered the work is, and they said most of the time you're paying about a hundred dollars an hour for these people. Check sound too.
Significant.
Good.
I didn't give it to her.
Anyway, so that's, we're probably looking at somewhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars, and they said you can put that in the deal that he has to pay for, but they said the bad thing about that is when he picks the person that does it, so you're not in the best interest of the town, you let, so it's kind of like letting business audit themselves.
Well, isn't that the whole premise behind the bond?
Yeah.
When we hold the bond on something we technically do.
Right, and they said that's what we have to make clear when we're doing these approvals, is that we want that in there with the seminary building.
And who was they recommending, I was, we were here to get the minutes, just wondering what they felt on the timeline, nine versus thirteen?
I remember right, it was thirteen, because they were doing the department's recommendations that, that's the late game chairs, they were putting low housing income in there, so that added years.
I still need some answers from NHMA before we go too far in that. I could speak to the applicant, he's all set for now, and hopefully he can speak by the end of the week.
I think it's a given take both sides, and that's the final comfortable balance.
Yeah, but then this select board is the assessor, you do.
Right, we have, we have.
That's not, and not in contention.
We have verified that.
I, I think the big part is, on Thursday we clarified that the seventy-ninety applies specifically to buildings, not entire parcels, not, you know, so, while I appreciate what the assessor came up with, you know, this, this deal is a little more complicated than a straight-out assessment, so it applies to specific buildings, and I think it's helpful, but it's not the end-all, be-all for this, so I gotta give you more.
The point that Phil brought up was that, you know, no matter how you look at this, for fifty, seventy, eighty years, depending on how far you want to go back in count, that property's brought in zero tax.
You go eighteen sixty-three, you know.
You know, but when, when the tax start is my point, so, anything we do is a step up, and even though we're giving them the years, we're still gonna be collecting stuff on that property, we're gonna be, you know, whatever our baseline is, plus as they go along, like these new houses could be.
I just want to do stuff legal, so if we can write off, yeah, well, I'm just saying if we can write off the, if you can kick the Swiggy Jim right out of there, midnight down to this amount, then this, you know, that's all, but.
We don't, I think the point is, we can set an amount, it's say it five hundred thousand is the, is counted as set value, regardless of the houses or anything else, that's what we need to do.
Right, that's what we have to do.
Exactly, and the, I mean, as far as the other homes that he builds, that's additional revenue to the town in terms of tax dollars. But the deal for him is that valuation for the, for the seminary and the science building, so that he can develop the property, that's.
I, I think the key takeaway for everyone is, it's going to be more than the seventy-ninety assessment, what he has planned, what the historic district has given pass approval on, on full through, but it will be bringing a lot more in than just the seventy-ninety portion of it, so it's not going to be just that part of it, I guess that's the thing I want to, I remember is.
Yeah, I mean, building permits, there's impact fees.
You just have to use the individual buildings.
A lot of things that make this a good deal. Does anybody have anything else?
I have just two updates, a legal, a legal matter and a property purchase matter for non-public that I'd like to discuss, just to update the board on, on the current status.
One legal situation I want to talk about too, so. Take a motion to go into non-public.
Don't move, second.
Roca, vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Kuntz?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
That'll conclude our meeting.